Okay, I presume all of the settings are correct there. And I've got the recorder set, so let's go ahead and get started. Again, I'm Randy Curran, so I'm your professor over here at the University of New Orleans, working with Professor Lu to deliver kind of a recap of introduction to healthcare management. So today is session seven, and we primarily want to talk about teamwork. Teamwork includes looking at teams and groups. What are some of the differences? Why does it make more sense at times to use teams than groups? What's the current trend in both business and specifically in healthcare in terms of using teams, sometimes instead of groups? And again, some differences between teams and groups, but also understanding the the value and the importance of using teamwork, particularly as we as we develop more comprehensive systems and programs. When is it best to use a team versus when is it best to use an individual? And then different types of teams, particularly that we've seen during the height of the pandemic. And then now, as we're as we're kind of moving beyond the impact of the pandemic, what are the things that we learned during the pandemic that's that's, you know, really changing or reshaping the way the work environment is today? And so our five things for today, what's the difference between groups and teams? What's one hurdle a virtual team will need to overcome? What is teamwork? And why do teams fail? There are several reasons that teams can fail at times. It's important that you at least understand a bit of that. And then composition impact. And how does the how does the composition of the team impact the success of the team or the performance of the team and certainly the abilities of a team? So again, talking about our eight core competencies in healthcare teamwork is the one we're going to focus on today, just work groups. Interact primarily to share information. A work team generates positive energy through coordinated effort. So what that really means is a work team is there's more subjectivity to a work team in terms of how we interreact and interrelate to each other. How we how we share in ideas, how we talk about things. With work groups, there's still more focus on the individual. And again, there are times that work groups are are a better approach than work teams or teamwork. But generally speaking, we've moved a lot of our processes, at least in the American model of business, to more of a teamwork type approach. And so again, with work groups. In terms of the goal for a work group is to share information for a work team is collective performance. If you know, with the work team, the focus is on synergy. And remember synergy is where we work together to build off of one another to to create energy and create a positive experience. As far as accountability goes, with a work team, there's more of an individual but a mutual accountability for the team. With a work group, again, there's a lot more individualism in a work group. And the reason there's a lot more individualism in a work group is just merely because of the structure of how work group operates. Or a group is more formalized. We're a lot more likely to see a group type approach as as it becomes more basic and what needs to be accomplished. A military action, as an example, is far more likely to be group like rather than team like. Although there are certainly there are certainly circumstances where a team like approach is used in a military operation. But if it's if it's a top down type discussion or type approach where where someone gives orders and people follow orders, it's more of a group type approach. A team type approach is that that interconnectivity within the group where generally everybody has the same the same rank or the same standing. There may be somebody responsible for coordinating those activities who may have a slightly higher rank. But again, with with teams, we're more of a group of individuals that are that's a with teams, it's more of a team of individuals or a team of similar people at similar levels doing somewhat similar things in how they interact and interact with each other. So again, let's look at our definition. A group, two or more individuals, interactive and interdependent. But typically, there's a there's a personal independency that exists in a work group. And a work group is more of a top down approach where a leader gives instructions to a group of followers and the group of followers are again contained within the group. So as far as the evolution of groups to teams, how much has changed and why has it changed? It again, it doesn't always mean that a team approach, a teamwork approach is the best way. But there has been, at least again, the the American experience, we've seen a lot more efforts shift from group activity to team activity. And again, that doesn't always mean that they're more effective. But it does reflect an approach of trying to be sure that people are more involved in some of the decisions that they make rather than feeding answers back to a key individual based on, again, based on the orders that they've been given. It it is important to also note that a team appears to be less likely to be swayed by fads or herd mentality, but that's not always true. And and again, whether it's group work or teamwork, it is important to it is important to step back for a moment and attempt to avoid herd mentality, although that's one of the aims of either group work or teamwork is is at what point do you wind up with a better idea because everyone's everyone in the herd is following the same idea? I'll talk about this a little bit more later on this segment. And our, I'm sorry, are teams truly effective? You know, so generally, yes, we'll talk about this also today. But what conditions affect their potential? And then how do people work together? And again, why do teams work in places that groups don't? And and the the main outcome of today's class is that you have a better understanding of the difference between groups and teams. And when would be a good time to use a group type approach? And when is the best time to use a team type approach? And then what's the role of teamwork? Again, just the American model here is we've evolved more to teamwork, not always, but generally we have. Teams are popular now because, again, as as organizations restructure themselves, they're trying to be sure that they're tapping into employee talents. Remember I said earlier that the group type approach is more of a top down direction, instruction, and people following those instructions. With teams, teams are a little bit more flexible in how they change the dynamics of what's going on based on real time intelligence, what's what type of feedback they're having. And then how quickly can they react to a given situation? Teams do appear to be easier to put together, activate, use them in a given situation, and then and then dissolve if needed. But teams appear to be quicker to be able to do at least short tasks where we need more than the input of one person, as an example. It's also it also appears to be easier to motivate a team. Again, the traditional approach to a group is a top down leader follower type relationship. I'm the leader, you're the followers, all of the followers I get together, I tell them what to do, they go out and do it. They typically work together to get it done. But there's less individual motivation in that type of approach. To some extent, because sometimes there's less buy in under that type of approach. So again, when I'm motivating a team, you typically have more employee participation. And part of that is because they're they're more likely to be bought into what type of decisions they make. And consequently, what are the outcomes of those decisions? Again, groups, work groups really don't have so much of a need to engage in collective work. Again, there's more of an individualism that exists in work groups. On the other hand, that work team focuses on that positive synergy. Again, the synergy of a group is how one person comes up with one or more people come up with an idea. Additional people within the team build on that idea and how they how they how those team members feed off of each other, so to speak. They complement each other, they work together. That teamwork type approach has been and continues to be very successful, at least in getting tasks done where there's more creativity involved. Again, if it's if it's more of a mundane task and it's more of a or it's it's, you know, or it's a life or death type situation, the you're far more likely to have this this top down manager group working through a situation. But when there's more creativity that's needed and there's more need for an interaction within members of the team, you're a lot more likely to see a team type approach to that to that type of solution. Five basic dimensions that that need to be known to help a team be successful. What are they trying to achieve? How are they trying to achieve? What it is there that they're doing? Who within the team is doing what, meaning if there's different assignments within the team, how do they work together to, again, play off of one another? In the in the United States military, as an example, a place that that they use teams would be a specialized type unit. As an example, there's an elite group of people with who are in the Navy and or are in the Marine Corps, I'm sorry, who are in the Navy, and they're called SEALs. Or also known as frogmen, but one part of a team is putting together a group of people who have different specialties and how they play off of each other. Again, most of most of any military type approach is a group type approach where you have one commander and then you have multiple followers and the followers are compelled to follow the orders of the commander with a but in special operations, they're far more likely to use a team type approach where most everybody has the same rank and there may be somebody there with a slightly higher rank who is responsible for the activity of the team. But each of the team members have a unique skill set. And so who is doing what is critically important within the team concept to be sure that that people with certain skills are assigned certain things to do? It's their role to to both participate within the team and focus on the things that they do best. A timeline, when is it due? What are we doing and and when do we need to get it done by? And then where are we doing? The where can be certainly important if it's off site, if it's a targeted area that we're trying to get to. Again, in the healthcare world, the where we're doing it could very well be in the hospital, but it could also be, how do we work with another hospital? How do we work in the community setting? Where is very important, although all five of these are very important as far as being successful as a team. But again, the the aim is what are we trying to achieve? How are we trying to do it? Who is responsible for what? When does it need to be accomplished by and where are we doing? You know, teams typically do these four things well, problem solve. They're far more likely to be self managed. Again, you may have somebody with a a slightly higher rank within a team who we were more likely to use the word responsible, they may be more responsible for some of the the team outcome. But they're less likely to be that that, again, that authoritarian type manager. So the self managed work team is far more likely to be a reflection of how teams again, work with each other or interact with each other. The cross functional team is where we're bringing in different team members from different sections to help us identify how how places that interconnect can be improved. There's something referred to as lean six sigma, which is a manufacturing process designed to reduce waste, reduce errors and shorten time to production. Efficiency and effectiveness are very important in business and industry. It's also very important in healthcare and hospitals. A good cross functional team will look at something called door to discharge time, meaning from the time the patient walks in the door, what are the different touches the patient makes along the way with somebody in triage, somebody in the emergency department? What's a holdup in emergency department for someone to stay there for an extended period? Is it because laboratory services are slow or imaging services are slow? Cross functional teams can help set the cadence for that. And and the importance of cadence means, again, from from the time the patient walks in the door until the time they're discharged, how quickly should that happen? Theoretically, the quicker that happens, the more capacity we create because it frees up beds, it gives us more capacity to be able to take care of other patients. Cross functional teams can be one of the most important things we do if we're trying to improve efficiency or effectiveness in an organization. And then the last one really emerged in a pretty dramatic way over the last four years or last three years as we dealt with COVID-19. And that's the virtual team. And and I will tell you, because of some of the success with a virtual team, we've really begun to see, you know, what the future can be with with teleconferencing and telecommuting. You know, some of the hospital organizations that exist in the area where I live now have a number of employees who probably will not go back to the office. And it does not appear, it does not appear that they're going to wind up back in the office in the foreseeable future. There will be times that they may need to be at a meeting, but generally speaking, they're virtual. And a part of that virtual team membership means, and particularly as the hospital systems continue to get larger, it sometimes it just doesn't make sense to drive for hours and hours and hours for a meeting. It's a very short period of time. Here in America, we like our our automobile. Also, we don't mind driving for more time than we probably should. But the virtual team has really replaced a lot of that. And the virtual team really allows us to be literally anywhere and spend time with other people in other parts of the the city, other parts of the community, other parts of the country, or or even around the world. You know, again, virtual teams are limited only by the connectivity and the language that we speak. If we can understand one another and we have good connection, a virtual team can literally mean people working in in multiple places and anywhere around the world. Problem solving teams. So we look at problem solving teams as a way to help us identify things, particularly if they if if it applies to the environment of where team members come from. You know, in the past, we had teams that were smaller in size, you know, five to 12. The challenge with that is if you don't give the team the authority to implement some of their suggestions, it's certainly important to look for ways to empower a team so that their solutions can affect in a positive way, the way that we're trying to get something accomplished. And and by cutting the number of steps. In this particular example, Merrill Lynch used a problem solving team to reduce the number of steps in a process and therefore reduce the number of days from 15 to eight for this particular process. I can tell you that a problem solving team that I witnessed when I worked at the University of North Carolina in the hospital system there looked at ways to clean up and and reduce the number of days a patient stayed in the hospital for a liver transplant. And they were able to reduce the average length of stay for more than 12 days to less than eight days. And they did that all by by, again, bringing together a problem solving team that was that was cross functional, that represented different departments within the organization, but each looked at their steps in the process and looked for ways to make a cleaner handoff between one step in the process to another step in the process. If you can remove the number of steps or decrease the number of steps along the way and clean up the process, meaning making it it shorter, easier for a smooth transition, you're far more likely to be able to save time. If you save time, you save money and 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 it hopefully it becomes a more profitable experience from a financial standpoint. But more importantly, it becomes a more personal experience for the patient to be able to leave the hospital center. Very few patients want to stay in the hospital any longer than absolutely have to. It's a noisy place, we're constantly bothering you, the food's not great, the bed's not terribly comfortable. Most people don't want to be in a hospital. And so problem solving teams can help focus on the effectiveness of the healthcare while also focusing on the efficiency of healthcare in terms of how we can reduce the number of steps in the process. You know, these self managed work teams do have some interdependence on each other. Again, as we've talked about before, the self managed work teams typically have somebody who's responsible for the coordination or the assignment of task. But generally speaking, everybody is on the same level. Self managed teams typically select their own members. They typically evaluate each other's performance. Although, again, most teams have somebody who's at least responsible for the activities of what's going on. But there's a lot less need for supervision. Although it's unusual for a supervisor position to be completely eliminated because at some point you do have to have someone responsible. If if you're dealing with highly functioning individuals, in many cases, you don't need a supervisor, you set the goals, you measure the outcomes based on their achievement of those goals as opposed to having this manager employee type relationship. Although there's always some of that, but there's less of that in a team type environment or a team type approach. This is just another example of Starbucks creating a cross functional team. Starbucks is a coffee company here in the United States that is they market their brand around the world. And they they have found their their place in the market by being able to create an inviting atmosphere for people to come into compelling products in terms of they're they're tasty. It's typically a good experience. The biggest, there's one very close to here and I wound up making a trip there a couple of days a week, actually for my wife. I I don't drink coffee, but the whole point to this is a part of cross functional teams was to help look at ways they could co brand and and develop their product so that it could be marketed in a in both a cost effective way. But but integrated this multi faceted strategy, the whole aim to that was what are different strategies to be in certain marketplaces? What's attractive in New Orleans may be different than what's attractive in San Francisco. But how do they distribute their product and brand their product in a way that with many strategies that have similarities but but can also be refined to target certain communities? And then how do we use, how do we use team members that are at different levels in the hierarchy of the organization, but they come together to accomplish a given task by how they how they look at things, how they evaluate things? You know, virtual teams are, again, this is this is our more recent development. But it's a more recent development for a couple of reasons. Number one, technology, technology has this was not 20 years ago, a virtual team was a conference call on a telephone that sometimes the line quality was poor. Today, virtual teams really allows us to sit face to face with much larger groups of people and communicate with each other. With virtual teams, again, there we can be rooms away, we can be a state away, we can be a continent apart, but as long as we had have good connectivity, good bandwidth, good computer infrastructure, a common language, or at least an opportunity for us to understand one another. Honestly, a virtual team can go anywhere and do most anything in terms of the types of missions that a team can accomplish, at least something that can be done virtually. And again, the 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 whole challenge with the virtual team, we saw many of those challenges, particularly during the pandemic where where the virtual approach was sometimes our only option. And so we've gotten much better at this over the last four years, primarily because we've had a lot of experience with this over the last, well, three to four years. And, you know, the evolution of this is nearly all teams today do at least some of their work remotely. Um, and you know, the evolution of this is nearly all teams today do at least some of their work remotely. Um, again, there was once a time that a team met, we came together as a group. Um, we're far less likely to talk about it that way, or or we come together as a group. Can include this virtual space as well as physically being in front of one another. Um. There are challenges for uh virtual teams. Number one, one aspect of the team includes social interaction, social rapport. How we how we develop relationships with each other. It's not terribly important within the group because in the group, there's more individualism. In the team, we typically need some additional social camaraderie. Um, for a team to be more efficient and more effective. Um. Again, when there's lower levels of virtuality in teams, um there's higher higher levels of information sharing. Um, but high levels of uh uh virtuality hinder it and and again. What that really means is there are other ways for us to support one another. But it's difficult to do in a virtual environment, um if it's only a virtual environment. Um, you know, for virtual teams to be effective. Um, there's gotta be trust established among members. And the real challenge with establishing trust with, um. Again, a virtual team works better if we're working with someone with people that we have. Somewhat of a social construct with, we know a little bit about who they are, how they're likely to react in a given situation. Um. Because there's less individualism in teamwork. Um, the the greater the individualism, the more likely that is group work and group activities. Um, and so for a team to work together, teams have to be able to trust one another. Um, you know, um. Other other challenges with a virtual team is is monitoring your progress. Being sure that no one just kind of disappears. Um, you know, when you think about all of the different ways that that. Um, people have come up with uh to indicate that they're. That their virtual presence is their real presence as opposed to. Uh, being somewhat disconnected. Um, the virtual team can be hindered by that or helped by that if you if you know what you're looking for and you know how to deal with those situations. Um. A- and again, uh challenges uh can be that the. Um. That the activities of the team aren't necessarily visible or publicized. The more the team feels that their activity is not benefiting the organization. Are not being rewarded or not being seen by others. The less likely you're gonna have buy into to the team activity. And we're far more likely to see that exacerbated in a virtual team, just simply because we're already disconnected at the beginning. Um, so factors for team success, we've gotta have the resources we need, the leadership we need. And leadership, again, because it's a team. Leadership can come from from any member of the team at any given time. Because the role of the team is typically, we're all functioning at 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 or similar to the same level. And so we're all working together, but we have to have a climate of trust. And we have to have some type of a reward system. Um, that reflects our team contribution because again, the aim of the team is kind of was seen as a team. Um, so as far as adequate resources, key parts to adequate resources, being sure that. Again, if it's a virtual team, being sure that we have the technology, we need to be able to connect. Um, being sure we have the bandwidth, being sure we have uh the resources that are necessary. This leadership and structure for a team is more about. Um, either informal leadership or as far as structure goes, it may be more of a coordinator. But it's being sure that we don't have, um. Again, this is, this becomes more of a group approach if we have a top down leader follower type. Organization, I'm the leader, here are the orders, these are the things you need to do. That's more of a group type approach. There can be some feedback from from the members of the group. Um, but if we're expecting the group to interconnect. Yeah, get energy for one another, also known as synergy. Um, and build off of one another, that's far more of a team. And so, um, and then this climate of trust, um, it is, as I've said several times now, a. Team is more of a a social reflection of a group of people. And how they get together and how they work together. So having a climate of trust is essential and how teams work together. Um, and then that performance and reward system, being sure that people know that. What they're doing is being rewarded and how it's being seen. You know, um, and when we look at the team member, um, being sure that. Um, we're putting people on the team who have. This is commonly referred to as KSAs, uh knowledge, skills and abilities. What are their KSAs and how do they contribute to the organization? Um, particularly, how do they contribute to the team? You know, um, if if we use this in an approach to athleticism or an athletic team. Um, you know, one of the important aspects of a team is we all have to. Kind of pull our own weight and maybe it's from just a perspective of a position that we're playing. Um, if I'm playing soccer, also known around the world as football. Um, what? What am I doing in different roles? Am I a goalie? Am I a defender? Am a struck, am I a striker? Um, obviously, we don't have a team of of. Um, all goalies, or we don't have a team of all strikers. We have to have people with given skill sets. On the field at one time and we reward people. Who are the best at their particular skill and how it contributes to the team. Um, again, we certainly see this in in athletic teams. But honestly, we see this in business teams and and that business extends well into healthcare. Um, you know, it it's it's also important to be sure that, um. If there's, if there's failure or unusual activity or there's mediocrity. Um, uh, sometimes that becomes newsworthy, um, that's not what we want to achieve. Um, but it's important to point out that that it. Teams' performance is not just the summation of its individual members. Um, a team's performance is really just that. It's the performance of the team is the outcome of the team. You know, I go back to uh my football or soccer analogy. You know, so much of that is measured in wins and losses and we're always. Uh, any team will tell you they're always looking for ways to get better. And sometimes that's that's helping the person they have in the role that they're playing to get better. Sometimes it's trading team members uh with other teams to get better talent into a given position. Um, but it does set limits um on what they can do and how they can perform on the team. Um, allocation of roles, um, how are people selected for the roles that they're that they're supposed to fill? Um, what type of experienced people do we have? The more skilled and the more experienced people are, the more likely the team's gonna succeed. Um, but that's not the only reason teams succeed. Um, and it's also, um, when we're looking at at who's central to the work process. Um, it, a part of that is commitment. Uh, you wanna put your most experienced and conscientious workers in the most central role of the team. Um, a- again, though, not so much as the manager. But more as a leader and certainly more as a coordinator, being sure that people are staying on task. Being sure that the the team is not moving away from uh its aims. And then what's the size, um, five to nine is typically a good place for a size of a team. Um, the smaller the number of the people who can do a task. Are far more likely to be successful doing the task. Um, most times we make teams too large. And if we make teams too large, they can become ineffective and certainly inefficient. Um, sometimes it requires smaller numbers. Um, it's important to to build a team that reflects the size and scope of the problem. Um, it's also important to build a team to um find. The the cohesiveness of what's needed to to get the job done. But there can also be loss of communication, social lo- loafing. Where, again, if you have too many members, people just kind of feel like. Oh, I'm gonna sit this one out or I'm gonna skip some of these things because there's so many people here, I you don't need my input. Um, large teams typically don't do well, um unless there's good. Um, um, team structure. And and maybe a part of that is uh breaking into sub teams. Diversity is also important, um. One of the key roles in terms of diversity is to recognize the fact that. We all have different personal experiences and the more we can. I can be as empathetic as I want to be. But I don't have personal experiences of someone who is female. Or someone who is um brown or black or someone who is. Um, um, a recent immigrant. Uh, my family did immigrate to America, but they did two hundred and fifty years ago. There are plenty of people who have immigrated here in the last fifty years or the last twenty years. And have, you know, have uh really unique experiences. Um, minorities groups have unique experiences. Um, uh, being female in America is actually not a minority, it's actually in the majority, but. Because of traditional roles that, again, for the for to some extent are being put aside. Um, the more important it is to be sure that we have those other opinions. That we have those other inputs. You know, um, when when the organization looks like the community it serves. And that includes a diverse workforce. Um, whether it's age or sex or race or or religion or or other demographics. The whole point to this is the more diversity we have. The more likely we're gonna be able to develop solutions. That reflect all of the needs of the community instead of the needs of just a select few. And so diversity of team members is essential to being sure that we can meet the needs of the community. Um, and whether it's social or um value or informational. Um, typically, our aims were uh team diversity. Includes uh trying to be sure that our our solutions reflect the needs of the community. Um, this objective versus perception, again, perception is part of what we see. Objective is the things that we can measure. Um, being sure that we have diversity is essential. Um, uh regardless of of how it plays out because. Uh, again, from a diverse standpoint, having a broader opinions, having more. Uh cohesive opinions and having solutions that represent the whole community. Is more far more likely, from a healthcare standpoint, is far more likely to reflect the need of what the community has. Um. So let's kind of transition to team goals. Um, um, trying to look at where I'm at time wise. So as far as team goals. Um, it's important to think in the context of what are realistic things that we can do, how well have they been communicated? Um, and then how do we keep the team focused on getting certain results? Um, and then if um efficacy uh and efficiency. So, um, the first thing is efficacy. Teams have to believe they can succeed. Um, what type of future success is gonna is gonna motivate them to work harder. Um, uh, in terms of what can management do to help the team? But uh understand the efficacy and be able to achieve it. Um, is to help build confidence, improve, um. Their technical and interpersonal skills. And then the greater the ability of teams, um, a- and team members, the more likely the team develops some confidence. A- and and in terms of delivering confidence, a part of gaining confidence and developing confidence. Is also based on success. As we become more successful. We're far more likely to be more confident in what we do. Now, i- it is important to not confuse confidence with competence. Confidence means I believe in myself. Um, competence means I'm very good at what I do. Sometimes people can believe in themselves really well, but not necessarily be good at what they do. So don't confuse one with the other. It's best when somebody has both. You want people to be competent in what they're doing. And you also want them to be confident, to be able to believe in themselves. Um, but don't confuse the two. Sometimes, sometimes we make mistakes with that. Um, creating a team is really about, um. Uh, what is the best talent, but what are other things that people bring to the plate? You know, um, it's not just about hiring the best talent, but typically we focus on the best talent, but. We also need to look at what team members could bring to. Uh, to our organization. Um, what type of uh technical skills do they have? Um, what type of personal skills do they have? How do they personally um interplay and interact with? Um, interact with some of the other team members. You know, finding a good fit is more than finding someone with the best talent. Um, uh, again, the the. The better we can match that, the better we develop our synergy and the better the team performs. Um, if we wind up with two people, a- again, I use the. Uh, team sport of soccer or football earlier. Um, having one really good goalie. Um, who's been very successful, doesn't mean we need to acquire another really good goalie. Um, there are other positions that we need to acquire. And and acquiring another good goalie may be the best person that's available out there for us to hire, has the best talent. But that person doesn't really fit on the team because we already have a good goalie. What are other positions that we need to fill with better talent? And so it's not just who has the best talent, it's what type of talent do they have? And how does their talent fit with the team that we have? Um, a- and being sure that people can work through difficult circumstances as a team. If they can, a- and rely on that diversity in age and education and. And personal background, um, or genetics, what what are the things that help them contribute to diversity? And then the different opinions that come with that. Um, those opinions can can be the source of conflict at times. But if we can get past the conflict, those opinions can also make it stronger because it does help us understand. Um, uh, positions that we can't otherwise. I mean, there, uh, again, I can be as empathetic as I want to be. Um, but empathy does not replace personal experience and so. Well, I wanna have empathy, um, having someone around me. Who has a personal experience that I don't have is a diversity of opinion. It adds to our diversity of opinion so that we can make better decisions as an organization. You know, um, if there are people out there who don't have good team skills. Um, the best solution is not to hire them. Uh, if you do hire them. Um, you're far more likely to be successful if you give them more group work and less teamwork. Because if they don't have good team skills, you're either gonna have to rapidly help them develop good team skills. Or you're gonna have to recognize that they're gonna perform more as an individual. Again, if I'm thinking about golf or tennis where, um, where it's typically an individual sport. Um, i- it's not necessarily essential for them to work. With other team members because there's not a lot of team involved in that. Um, if you can, if you can put them through training to help bring them up to speed. Um, just to understand that. Sometimes people don't want to be trained, they don't wanna change the way that they are. A-And and that's, that's why I get back to, you typically want to hire the best talent, but you also wanna hire the talent that fits best in your team. And sometimes, hiring the best talent and hiring the talent that fits best in your team are two different things. And so, again, you need to be careful about what you're doing. Again, the social loafing piece. There are lots of people who want to do a good job and want to do things well. Occasionally, though, you run into people who don't necessarily want to contribute to the team, or they feel like, you know, there's plenty of people doing plenty of things. I can goof off for a while. The social loafing, though, does erode confidence in the team and getting things done, and it can be a bit problematic. Can be substantially problematic for that matter. Team member preference is about how we get people to self-select in terms of how they participate. What are preferences for things that they wanna do? That can affect team dynamics in terms of how the team works together or doesn't work together. Team dynamics is essential in terms of communication and developing goals and meeting those goals and staying on time and staying on on task. You know, a-Again, i-if you if you need a group of individuals, that's more of a group. But if you if you need those individuals to kind of put some of their individualism aside and work together, that's far more likely to be a team. The complexity of it, it gives us different perspectives, and the more perspectives we have, the broader our approach can be in in creating a solution. You know, one question you need to ask yourself, does the work create a common purpose or set of goals for the people in the group? Is it more than an aggregate of individual goals? If it's an aggregate of individual goals, it's more group work. And group work requires less interplay with one another, doesn't really require synergy. It's more of a top-down type approach. But if you need more of a team solution, you're gonna need people to work together, and you're gonna need people who are flexible and understand that, again, the synergy part, how they build off of each other and how they work, talk to each other and and interact with each other. Again, if there's inter-interdependence in the task, teams typically work better getting something like that done. Okay, so, for our last, let me look at my timelines. For our, uh, the last topic I wanna talk about today, again, is kind of a recap of teamwork. What are teams doing? How how do people become a team whenever they've been a group? If there if there if there's more individualism, it's more likely to be a group. But as we get people to work closer together, to accomplish things that they probably couldn't do by themselves, we're far more likely to see this as team. A-And then, work is what each member does to be a part of the team. Six steps to building a high-performance team. What are the barriers? Eliminating the barriers. What are what are expectations, both for the team and each team member? And and in many cases, that expectation is set within the team, where people mutually agree, they develop develop a team plan, and and look for ways to to develop what they need to do. And then, they review and reassess what's going on. And then, in in terms of performance improvement, a part of this is to reflect back on what's been done. And that may include going through these previous five steps again, and then getting back to it's the cycle of performance improvement. And then, who's taking all of these steps? What are the team's goals? I-in terms of healthcare, high-performing teams do, um, high-performing teams are essential because there's a lot at stake. When we talk about there's a lot at stake, we're talking about patients' lives. You know, it it certainly is big business, there's a lot of money involved. But more than anything else, the human capital is the most important. And the human capital is, again, being sure that people live long, healthy lives through interventions that we may provide or we may provide support for. High-performing teams really exceed expectations. High-performing teams sometimes exceed the expectations of the team itself. You don't know what you can do until you get together and you you work together to get something done. And then, everyone really includes everyone on the team. A part of this is team leadership, being sure that that who's leading the team is a part of achieving goals. But but team leadership, team leadership is more of coordination. Keeping people on task, keeping people on time, that's more of the leadership skill. There's far less management with teams than there is with groups. With groups, there's more management-type skills where it's more science and less less art, less subjectivity. In terms of accomplishing our team's goals with available resources, being sure that leadership is actually getting things done. Sometimes, we talk about leading by leading, meaning leaders are are encouraging people to get things done, they're coaching them up. They're being sure that people are in the right position to do the best job they can to be successful. Leaders also create this inspiring vision. There's typically leadership outside of the team, that's executive leadership. And then, there's less formal leadership within the team. Sometimes, that can be separated by different tasks that are being done by the team so that there's different leaders for different tasks. Sometimes, it can be a coordinator of the team, but it's being sure that what we're accomplishing is being both rewarded and but in being seen as a common goal. And then, a part of this gets back to how you wanna be treated. You wanna treat others the way you wanna be treated, and that's you wanna be honest with each other, you wanna be able to support each other, and you wanna be able to work together. This ongoing clarity is central to keep staying on track, being sure that we're we're precise and accurate in what we're talking about, and then standards, what are the standards that that have been maintained and are being maintained throughout this? And then, our final topic for today is why do teams fail? Poor communication. Not defining the goals clearly and not setting goal expectations. As far as a a plan to achieve the goals, people not knowing what their role is or what their relationship is with other team members. If we don't set the expectations clearly and accurately, we wind up with poor performance. Sometimes, there's a failure to communicate. Sometimes, there's a failure to address problems and team behavior, people are misbehaving. Being sure that we're calling that out and that we're having conversations about that. People have to have accountability, being sure that that people are held accountable for what they do. When there's a lack of accountability, teams fail. And sometimes, groups, uh, teams are just dysfunctional. They just don't work well together. And if they don't, it's time to reset the team. Maybe we take some members off and rotate some additional team members on. Failure is also not looking at the situation in a creative way. What are what are ways that we can accomplish this without panic and with a sense of urgency? So, who's the leader? A-and again, when we talk about leadership, uh, success and leadership failure, and we talk about team success and team failure, a-a lot of this starts and stops with our leader. Building a high-performance team is really about trying to find the people that fit together, that work together, that accomplish common goals to get things done, to play off of each other and work off of each other, that synergy. It's a lot tougher to do in a virtual environment, but it certainly can be done in a virtual environment. And this kind of takes to takes us to our conclusion for today. You know, one of the most essential things that's that's revolutionized the workplace today is the introduction of teams. I'll say that, we still do a lot of things in groups. It depends on how how structured the task is or how creative we're looking for a solution. If we're looking for a creative solution, that's something a team should be accomplishing. There's a lot less that we're doing in groups today because there's a lot less regimented things that we have to do today that we're not constantly looking for a way to improve or a way to, if we're looking for a way to improve what we're doing to be more effective and more efficient, we're typically looking for teams to be able to accomplish that. Teams typically have good common characteristics. This effective leadership exists by all team members, and and each individual is leading based on something that they contribute to the team. There's a climate of trust, there's a reward system. The teams are typically small with diverse backgrounds, a-and diversity can come in a lot of different ways. But it's essential that people are committed to the solution and committed to the success of the team. And with that, we get back to our five things for today. What's the difference between groups and teams? What's a hurdle to a virtual team we have to overcome? What is teamwork? Why do teams fail? And why does team composition impact team performance? And we get to questions. Do you have questions today?
Hello, professor. Can I have your name?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, we learned in the previous course that it's a bad decision to blame members of a team. This evening, we have learned that lack of accountability for team members is also an important factor among many reasons for team failure. So, I don't know the difference between the blame and accountability. In my opinion, both of them belong to the behavior of a leader who urges team members and team members to take responsibility without taking or responding responsibility. So, how do you think about this?
So, that's a good question. You know, when we're when we're talking about how teams work together and and recognizing both success and identifying failure and and, you know, a-and leadership is about coaching people also. It's 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 about trying to get as much out of somebody as the as they can provide. We all have limitations. And so, if we identify those limitations, but we also identify the strengths and assign people things to do that play to their strengths, we're a lot more likely to be successful. You know, leaders fail when leaders don't recognize the strength of their team or they don't keep people engaged in what needs to be done. You know, leadership and leadership can take on several roles. Leadership can be both a a formal position. Leadership can be an informal position. In a team of five people working on multiple different solutions, one person may take the lead on a software approach, another person may take the lead on clinical application of what's being done in the context of what the team is trying to accomplish. So, we all need to be capable of doing the things that we've been asked to do. From a leadership standpoint, I'm gonna be successful if I if I align people's strengths with 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 what I believe they can do. If if I if I put people in the right position and I and I coach them, I I I encourage them, I give them the the things they need to be successful. Typically, they will be successful, and by working with the team, they're far more likely to get ideas from each other so that they can improve in what they're doing. You know, leaders succeed when leaders are helping people be successful, particularly their team. Leaders fail when they don't get everything that an employee, a a team member has to offer when they're not staying engaged, when they're not staying en-encouraging. And that leadership failure can come from the person who's formally assigned to lead the group. It can also come from the person who's leading a certain activity within the group or within the team. And so, leadership success and leadership failure really starts with the individual, and it can also be a success shared by the individual.
Thank you for having me.
Sure. Thank you for your question. Yes, I can hear you.
I have a question for you.
Um, I'm sorry, the volume changed. Try that again. I'm sorry, I'd I'm having trouble with the, I'm I'm sorry, I I I'm just, I'm not, I'm not able to understand, and it's yeah, if you can type it, thank you. Hello.
What way to to figure it?
The microphone is I'm not able to, after the first student, I'm I'm having trouble now hearing. Let me look at one of my settings on my computer. I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing what's being said. In terms of responsibility for team members. So you know, both inside of the team and outside of the team. So inside of the team, members of the team are responsible to help each other succeed. There's leadership within the team that is formal and informal. The formal leadership inside of the team is usually somebody who's a coordinator, who's been appointed either a team lead. But it's, there's far less structure in a team because we want the team to be able to we're we're more likely to work together if we see each other as as equals or we see each other as as you know, people who are creative and contributing to the team. And so the team succeeds if if individually, we're doing the things we need to do to work with others to to build that success. You know, but the the leadership's leadership success within a team really starts with the individual and the leadership success for the team is really about what's being done, how, what are we creating? What's our solution? What type of, what type of outcomes do we have? That's being accomplished. And and from the outside looking in, the outside more executive leadership is really looking at what the goals of the team were and how the team was able to to accomplish that. Thank you. I'm sorry, that's a good question. The the challenge I'm having at the moment is the again, the the microphone suddenly is, the volume is sounding distorted. I'm not able to hear clearly what the student is saying. Virtual teams popular in America. So thank you that. Thank you for writing that. And I'm I'm sorry, I couldn't understand what you were saying earlier. Please understand, it has nothing to do with your English, it has everything to do with our our sound connection. Our sound connection is not at the moment is not good. But your question, are virtual teams popular in America? Yes, they are because particularly as organizations get larger and and we have better, you know, we have better technology and better connectivity. We do a lot virtually today. Now, the downside to that is virtual, for teams to be successful, teamwork help requires to some extent that we work together, we know one another, we trust one another. When we think about those team dynamics, it's difficult to do if the first time we meet is virtually, it's difficult to do if the only time we meet is virtually. Virtual teams are shown to be more successful when it's it's one more way that that teams can meet. We use virtual classrooms at times to teach, but that's not our primary way of teaching. The best way for me to to teach for your class is to be there with you. It allows me to stop every five minutes and ask you questions. It allows me to to pause and interact with you. I can't do that when we're when we're virtually and particularly when our our sound is not great. So virtual teams are popular, but they're popular within the, when we know their limitations. Virtual teams do have certain limitations and we have to be smart about when we use them and when we don't use them. We have a large country. I I think there's a lot of things that we share that are very similar to China there. And so I would think virtual teams may be maybe popular there, I don't know, but they're, they are popular here. And I think they're gaining popularity as our technology continues to get better. And thank you, that is a very good question. I'm sorry, we went to had so much trouble getting to it. Hello. You know, so for a team to be successful, every team member has to do their part. The social loafing that I talked about during class does exist in teams. And and it can be very difficult for teams to be successful if every team member is not doing their part. And so within the team, it it maybe maybe who's responsible, the coordinator of the team pulls that person aside and talks to them about, you know, we need you, we need you involved, we need you engaged and coaching them. Sometimes, sometimes we have to replace them on the team. But team member, for a team to be successful, all of the members have to be engaged, all have to contribute. If people are not contributing, we're not getting the best the team has to offer. Thank you. Hello.
I have your question.
Okay.
A question I want to ask you. The first question, are there any differences in the operational measures in in the United States and China? If so, what are the main aspects?
So I I I don't know how how teams, the application of teams. I don't know how they're how they're used in China. So I I can't, I can't comment on how they're used there. I can tell you that in in America, the 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 US experience, we use teams for creative ideas, we use teams to improve effectiveness and improve efficiency. We use teams when when we want people to work together. Sometimes we still use groups, but we use groups to a much less extent. And then the way we use teams, whether it's a virtual team or it's a just a regular team type meeting in a face-to-face environment. All of this, all of this really depends on what the task is and where the team members come from. But we do use teams a lot, at least in the American model of business and the American model of healthcare. We use teams to solve a lot of problems to to improve efficiency, improve effectiveness and and reduce redundancy and reduce our inefficiencies that that are inherent in larger systems like we see with healthcare especially. And your second question? Can you repeat the last part of that again? What may be?
If an individual is placed in a reasonable position, we need the team. What may be the negative impacts on the team?
Negative impact. So you know, teams have to feel, you know, teams take on kind of a in individual type persona, so to speak. And the negative impact can be, if the team doesn't feel like they're being supported or rewarded, sometimes the team will go away, sometimes the team will will socially loaf together. Sometimes the team will just not be successful. For a team to be successful, a team has to be supported. We have to look at what the team is doing and we have to give them good feedback. Teams typically are successful, but we have to support them in that success. And and when I say we, I'm talking about leadership, the executive leadership needs to support a team. It can be, there can be negative consequences if we're not supporting them or if we're punishing them and we're not giving them the guidance they need to be successful. Teams can be a great way to solve a problem, but we can't just give it to the team and and let them go with it, we have to support them and stay engaged with the team. Thank you. So, you know, I I I think the main thing that we can take from from what we've learned about teams and groups, there's still a role for groups. But where we use groups is where we focus more on the individual. Where we use teams, we're looking more for how members of the team can can work with each other, feed off of each other to come up with better ideas. You know, there's as as teams work together, teams are more likely to to create a broader range of solutions and and maybe improve on what's the best solution. Teams can work to reduce, to improve efficiency, reduce our ineffectiveness. Teams can be used to in the lean six sigma approach, which includes improving effectiveness. But for teams to be successful, teams have to be supported. Executive leadership can turn a function over to a team, but they have to support the team. And they have to give them feedback. They have to stay engaged with the team. We can't just give it to the team and let them run with it. We do need feedback and we and the team does need reinforcement. You know, the team almost takes on a personality, a personality of its own. And not so much that it's an individual, but it certainly has an ego, it certainly wants reward and it certainly wants to feel needed and and feel respected. Respect is one of the most important things we need as individuals, but also if you're a member of the team, that you want your team respected as well. I'll see you tomorrow. Okay. Bye bye, everyone.